Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the January 4th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting, our first one of the year. Very excited. We have some new faces which we will get everyone acquainted with here shortly. So if you'll please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, I thank you so much for this tremendous community that we are a part of. I ask for your blessing here as we begin a new year here in 2023. And I ask that you bless this city immensely, especially this group of leaders that are up here. I ask you to bless us, to guide us, give us wisdom, discernment, and most importantly, the ability to work together as a team for the betterment of this community. I ask this in your name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is recognition of our outgoing city councillors. And unfortunately, our three outgoing city councillors, Art Marine, Councillor Sarah Spoon, and Councillor Greg Parker are not here this evening. Generally, we present them with an outgoing plaque that just expresses our gratitude as a city, which marks the years that they were on the city council. And so we'll make sure that they get those plaques. Either they can come pick them up or we'll make arrangements to mail them to them. So I will just say to Councillor Marine, who was appointed and filled in here for a short time. I appreciate his service and his dedication to our community. To Councillor Spoon, I wish her all the best of luck. I know that she made this decision with a lot of thought and discernment before resigning her position. But I know that she had the best interest of Camby at heart, and I wish her the best of luck. And then finally, to Councillor Parker, who I've worked with the longest here on the council. And over the years, I think Councillor Parker and I have, we've agreed on a lot of things and we probably have disagreed on more things than we've agreed on. But we've always had very good and deliberate conversations about the betterment of this city. And I will miss working with him here on the council. I know that I can call on him at any time if I need a reality check or I need a plethora of ideas on how to make Camby better. So wish them all the best. So thank you. So if you see them around town, please thank them for their service. This is a very tough and oftentimes thankless job. We get more criticism than we do praise. And depending on the week, it's nothing but praise. So thank you to those three for being a part of Camby and for all their work. We're going to move in now into the swearing in of the mayor and the new city councillors. And I believe we've got Judge Graff here to do those fun duties. Judge, who would you like first?
Who's the first sacrificial lamb?
I think it's me.
Do we have some oaths over there?
Yeah, here they are.
Here they are. Okay.
For the mayor, he's going to have to take the same oath, but paperwork is important.
I have no paperwork?
We're going to wing it.
All right, let's wing it. That's what we do anyways.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah. Okay, so.
Good. How are you doing?
I like the color. The black is good.
It's thinning.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me.
All right.
I state your name.
I, Brian Hodson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a resident of the city of Camby, Oregon.
That I am a resident of the city of Camby, Oregon.
And that I have been duly elected to the office of mayor of the city of Camby, Oregon.
That I have been duly elected as mayor to the city of Camby, Oregon.
Close enough. And that I will uphold my duties to the best of my ability.
I will uphold my duties to the best of my ability.
In accordance to the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
In accordance to the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the United States Constitution.
As well as the United States Constitution.
So help me God.
So help me God. That was pretty good from everybody. It was really good. Yeah.
So we have Mr. Maldonado and Mr. Davis. Come on down.
Do I need your response or do you?
He needs to be re-spawned.
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Yeah.
Okay, raise your right hands, please.
Wait, hold on.
We need to do Mr. Varwick, too. He was re-elected.
Okay.
That term was expired, so.
Yeah, well, okay. So face the cameras here. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your names.
I, Sean Maldonado.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a qualified elector of the city of Camby.
That I am a qualified elector of the city of Camby.
And that I have resided in the city of Camby, Oregon.
And that I have resided in the city of Camby, Oregon.
For not less than 12 months.
For not less than 12 months.
Immediately prior to the city council appointment.
Immediately prior to the city council appointment.
Or election.
Or election.
On January 4th, 2023.
On January 4th, 2023.
And that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the office of city councillor.
Of the city of Camby, Oregon.
Of the city of Camby, Oregon.
To which I have been appointed or elected.
To which I have been appointed or elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Is that one of these for each of you? One there and then I'll sign. After all these times, you'd think I'd be able to do this.
Yeah. Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it. We'll give a moment for a part of Chief Davis's family to evacuate. Or all of them, whichever. You all are.
Counselor Davis.
Sorry, you're right. It's now Counselor Davis. Excuse me. Those of you that wish to stay for the remainder of the meeting, please feel free to do so. If you don't want to, now's your chance. Next on the agenda is new staff introductions. Mr. Archer.
Mr. Mayor, that's just a standing item on the agenda, but we don't have any new introductions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is citizen input and community announcements. So this is an opportunity for audience members to address the city council on items that are not necessarily on the agenda. If you are attending in person, if you'll please, on the back podium there is a yellow card that you can fill out and bring up to our assistant city or deputy city recorder. And she will fill that out or turn that in to me, and then we'll give you your opportunity to speak. Each person will be given three minutes to speak unless otherwise deranged by the mayor, which Mr. Buckles has done. And then if you want to zoom in and make comment, please notify the city recorder or the deputy city recorder by 4:30 on the day of our city council meetings with your name and the topic that you want to speak about. And the only one that I'm aware of this evening is coming up, and that's Mr. Ken Buckles, who I believe wants to give us an update on or a quick recap on his wonderful adventure that he was on.
I didn't get it filled out. Yeah.
You can come up here to the.
There's two chairs there. Move that away from the swearing in. So there's so much to share and just I'll do a couple really incredible highlights. Thanks to you all doing an apology proclamation. You've got about six mayors, one in Hermiston that are following your lead and others that are looking at it, considering it. Got a lot of praying. There was some dangerous driving out there, the high winds in the Midwest and again through Texas and pouring down rain. I've lived in Oregon my whole life. I've never seen it rain this hard before in Iowa. You couldn't even see anything. It was like a whiteout. And but we know we touched the lives of hundreds of Vietnam veterans, every city. So many emotional responses. It's just unbelievable how much it meant to them. And probably thousands of Vietnam veterans saw the Hummer at the wall because the Capitol Police let us park it as close as we could get to the wall. And it was amazing. But the two real quick stories, and there's so many to share. But the one was, we were driving through the hills of Western Pennsylvania. They call them mountains. But and there was road construction for 10 miles and there was no way to get on either side and then the Hummer's so wide. And again, we're praying because you're sandwiched in between tractor trailers. And that Midwest Highway 80, they own the road. And it was something else. But we were getting low on gas and I couldn't see any of the signs, you know, on the side, "Gas ahead." And finally, there was an exit 110, "Gas ahead." Well, the engine died just as I started about a quarter mile from the exit. I put it in neutral and we went through the toll gate on the right and it stopped about 50 yards past the toll gate in front of a Holiday Inn. It was quarter to five on Monday night. I called AAA. They said you have to go through the toll gate first. I called them. They said there was no, at first, no AAA driver within two hours. They were wrong. There was one five minutes away. He got there within minutes. And then he says, "You're not going to believe this, but this small town has a Chevy GMC dealership in it." So I called them and they said, "Yeah, get it here, but we close in 10 minutes." So he gets us there and, you know, we figure, we're guessing that it's a fuel pump maybe. And they said, "We'll look at it tomorrow." And then the manager looks at us, "Do you know where you are?" And we said, "No." This is where Flight United 93 went down in 9/11. And we go to a rest, family-owned restaurant, a couple blocks from that evening from the Holiday Inn. And we get to know the people, the owner of the family restaurant next to us. And this lady, and they tell it, and she offers to take us to the memorial and the museum. And it's gut-wrenching. I was raised never cry. I broke down and cried twice in that museum and had to walk away. Then she took us across the street to Patriot Park. And we're not talking little flags. We're talking big poles and big flags. People flying flagpoles, over 7,000 of them, with a large steel silhouette of an American soldier praying with a rifle in the helmet on the thing to represent all Americans lost in Iraq and Afghanistan. So that was very powerful. But the one that I want to stand out is we went to, wherever I had connections, they set up impressive events. And we went to Percy Piestewa. Her daughter Lori Piestewa was the first Native American killed in the history of military combat. She was killed in Iraq. She was best friends with Jessica Lynch, and she was in that ambush right there. Well, Extreme Home Makeover did a home thing. They were living in a dilapidated trailer on the reservation and they built him a $6,000 home that's absolutely beautiful so she could raise her grandkids. Her husband just died a few years ago of age and orange cancer. He was a Vietnam vet and they're Hopi tribe. Well, they have a whole room that was built as a memorial to Lori Piestewa with Native American stuff in there. And they won't let anyone take any pictures, but it's another one, a tearjerker. Well, anyway, she invited about 30 Vietnam veterans who are from several different tribes. The Apache, the Hopi, the Navajo and everything. And when we gave our program, they, there was a gentleman who was an Apache Indian. He was in a wheelchair, looked like he was in his early 80s, and he's bawling. And his wife says, "Come here." And I go over to him and he said, "I've never gotten involved with veteran things my entire life." He says, "It's just too painful for me. I just can't do it. And I'm grateful that Percy lied to me to get me to come to this." But I was badly wounded in Vietnam. And we landed at McCord Air Force Base up in Washington. And they had him on a stretcher. They were carrying him. And protesters were 50 yards away at a cyclone fence throwing eggs, trying to hit him. Two of the eggs hit him. And he crawled into a bottle for decades and couldn't keep a job. Couples destroyed relationships. And just, he just couldn't, he wouldn't stop crying. And it just, it meant so much to him. So you all supported this, not only emotionally, but financially, too, the city of Camby. And of course, Sean Varwick sponsored the fuel, and we're so, so grateful. Before we end it, the way we've ended it for everyone else. Okay, I'm not going to end it. You're not. We.
You're going to turn, Linda.
Jay and Jan Weston, who own Weston Dealerships. They asked if we could, two weeks ago, we could come and give. And we were able to give them at a luncheon, a longer spiel and everything. And they said, "We've discussed this. We feel like you're going to be asked to take this around Oregon and Washington and who knows where else. You're keeping the Hummer. And we want this cause to spread." So I don't know, you know, there's a lot of things, parades and 4th of July's and Memorial Day and stuff. And we've been asked to take it to a couple of places already. They want it back in Washington, DC.
Oh, wow.
I don't know.
You didn't know what you bit off, did you?
But.
That's great.
We, everything we end, she sings a short version of a song to let the veterans know how we feel. And it's very powerful and emotional.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to say something real quick?
Yes, I want to say that we're so grateful because everything started here in Camby. And one of the things you did share is everywhere we went, we talked about Camby. And everybody wanted to know, "What is Camby? Where is Camby?"
What is Camby?
And then we point to the.
And we point to your logo and they say, "Where's Camby?"
You got to take a picture by this, point at this, you know, it's like, it was just amazing. And how many people with different diversity, different ideas of life came together to allow us to honor them for being Vietnam veterans. And a lot of times, we would be riding, I mean, hours. And we would pull over for gas and someone has been following us.
Oh, yeah.
They want to know how, why.
Parking lots, Vietnam vets.
What is this for and why would you be the chosen ones to do it?
I could tell you so many stories. The guy's just shocked and he'd get upset. "What the heck is this about?" And I tell him, and they start crying.
And I've been trying to put together a 41-day trip into, what, 20 minutes? I've been trying for a week now and I cannot do it. I leave out so much. There's so much to talk about, but those are two good things.
So anyway, I know you're on a time. People probably.
Me, too. So we are very grateful.
We chose to sing this to Jay and Jan Weston and his team because without their incredible donation of the Hummer and having it wrapped. And so we feel it's very appropriate for her to do this.
I mean, everyone came together on this team and it's just been, I mean.
So now, and then we're done.
Every time I see somebody, I'm going smiling. Did you ever know that you're my hero? You're everything I wish I could be. I can fly higher than an eagle. For you are the wind beneath my wings. Did I ever tell you you're my hero? You're everything, everything I wish I could be. Oh, now I can fly higher than an eagle. For you are the wind beneath my wings. Fly, fly, fly so high, so high I almost touch the sky. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and you, and you, and you. Thank you, thank you, thank God for you. You are the wind beneath our wings. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Totally appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Did that make up for the lack of praise you guys get sometimes?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thanks for the escort, the fire department. That was amazing.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both very much for this. And I know if you've not gotten with Frankie here, I'm sure there's probably a couple of podcasts in that trip that are worth producing. And I look forward to the jointly written book by the two of you about the trip, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'll be pretty amazing.
That would be a nice read.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda, which include the approval of the October 19th, 2022 city council work session in regular meeting minutes, the reappointment of planning commissioners Dan Ewart and Michael Hutchinson, and then appointment of planning commissioner Craig Luwelling.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes of the October 19th, 2022 city council work session and regular meeting, the reappointments of Dan Ewart and Michael Hutchinson to the planning commission with a term to expire on December 31st, 2025, and the appointment of Craig Luwelling to the planning commission for a term that will expire December 31st, 2024.
I will second.
Motion's been made by Council President Hensley and second by Councillor Varwick to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the October 19th, 2022 city council work session in regular meeting, the reappointment of planning commissioners Dan Ewart and Michael Hutchinson to the planning commission for a term that will expire on December 31st, 2025, and appointment of planning commissioner, pardon me, appointment of Craig Luwelling to the planning commission for a term that will expire on December 31st of 2024. Any discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? That carries 6-0. Next up this evening, a couple of pieces that are generally just kind of some workhouse pieces for us with the new council and beginning of a new year. And so the first is the selection of council president. So for this one, currently, Councillor Hensley is the council president and has been in that role now for two years. And has expressed interest in continuing in that capacity. And then Councillor Varwick has also expressed interest in being chosen as the council president. So open it up for comments or questions or a motion? Sorry, Councillor Davis.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, fellow councillors, I'd like to make the nomination of Tracy Hensley for council president. It's my honor to make that nomination for Tracy in the fact that she's been doing the job. She's also the senior member of the council at this point. She's been very good about her liaison appointments. Attending the liaison appointments, attends numerous chamber meetings, community meetings, and is very good about her carrying on her responsibilities.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councillor Davis and second by Councillor Patton to nominate Councillor Hensley for retaining as current council president. Is that still your wish?
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate the nomination and you're second, Councillor Patton.
Any other discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
I abstain.
Okay.
Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate your vote of confidence.
So that passes 5-0-1. Thank you. Next up is discussion of selection of committee liaison assignments. So just to kind of broach this subject here. So from the council policies and operating guidelines, so regarding council liaisons. Council liaisons are selected on an annual basis. The designation is flexible based upon the needs of the council. Liaisons are encouraged to attend committee meetings on a regular basis. Liaisons will report back to the council on committee activities not included in the committee minutes. Liaisons are not voting members of committees. And liaisons will clarify personal opinion and differentiate that opinion from the city council's opinion. I will add to say that I strongly encourage liaisons to commit to going to, or at least zooming in to your meetings or the committees that you are liaison to. If you cannot, please connect with the chairs of those committees as soon as you can to make sure that you are getting caught up on notes or if there's anything that needs to be brought back to the council for deliberation or conversation on. Over the last couple of months, I've heard from several boards and committees that have felt their council liaison did them a disservice by not attending meetings in any capacity. So it's a new year. It's a new group. I'm hopeful that that's not something that I will hear as this year moves on. So years and years past, I've gone through, and I think I've captured all of our groups and committees, Maya. So if I'm missing any, please let me know. But in years past, like I said, I've gone through, much like this year. Remember, everybody to get their thoughts and hopes and dreams and fears of which liaison roles that they would like to have. And there were some overlap. And so I think I'm much better spread out amongst the council, I think, this year, where everybody's, I have, I only have one, so, which is okay.
That should be.
Yeah, I think. And then everybody has like two or three, but it's pretty spread across the board. So I'm. Um, I'm just gonna start at the top of the list and we can go through it. Um, if there's a, a feeling of um the, one way or the other, please, you know, feel free to say so. So uh the bike and pedestrian committee, which is now open. Um, and um so councillor Maldonado, would you mind being liaison to that group?
I, I can handle that.
Thank you, sir. Um, Canby utility board is also now open, um councillor Patton, would you mind being that liaison?
Um, sure, I wasn't sure if, Chris, if you had an interest in that as well, or are you something else?
But my interest is really in the security of our transforms.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the heritage and landmark commission, um councillor Banks, um being the history buff that you are, I thought maybe that would be something of interest.
Yes, that's right, I am.
Perfect, thank you. Um, library advisory board, I think, is yours currently councillor Banks, yes?
I'm fine with that as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, the parks and recreation advisory board, I have been on the last couple of years uh and do thoroughly, thoroughly enjoy that group and what we've done over the last couple of years, but um I think it is time that I um need to take something off my plate as there's a bunch of other things on the horizon that I will have to be doing on a much uh more of a regional level. Um, and so um I am not um gonna be that liaison anymore and I have had councillor Davis's expressed interest in, in that, so councillor Davis, is that something you're willing to take on and do? Thank you. Um, planning commission was um, has been councillor Varwick's, you've been on that, that liaison there for a while. Uh, and I know councillor Patton, you had expressed a lot of interest in, in that as well. And Mike, what, what I'm gonna say to all of you, the liaison role doesn't, whatever you're here, doesn't preclude you from going to any of the other boards or committees for a meeting or reading, you know, please read the notes or watching the Zoom meeting. Um, in fact, I encourage us all to go. Um, it's been a while since I've, I've been to a couple of these uh committees as well, and so please make the effort to try to make these um here over the next couple of months as you can. Um, and councillor, councillor Varwick is expressed wanting to retain that for right now, so.
Yeah, for me, I was just saying, you know, as a former member of the planning commission and I have a good relationship with Don, I thought it would be fitting, but if councillor Varwick wishes to continue and he doesn't mind that I continue to serve as an advocate for that group as well at this, then I am fine. Will that, will that be okay?
That works for me.
Okay.
Um, the, thank you, both of you, appreciate that. Traffic safety commission, um currently is uh council president Hensley and she has expressed interest in continuing in that capacity. The um transit advisory committee um is an open one, um and councillor Varwick's um expressed interest in wanting to be that liaison, so um appreciate that, thank you. Um, the Canby school district has currently been councillor Banks and councillor Banks and I had some conversations to whether or not that was, you know, a liaison role that we wanted or needed necessarily. Um, and it kind of, I, I think uh that could go either way, honestly. Um, I think we had that liaison role because years past, it was a little bit of a uh, we'll say a strained relationship a little bit between the city and the school district and I know that um Scott and then Dr. Downs have uh worked really, really hard here the last year with Dr. Downs to be able to kind of mend that, that relationship and whatnot, and so I, I mean, I'll, I mean, do we feel we need it, do we want this particular one still to be the liaison?
Mr. Mayor, I, I, I think it is still a valid liaison role, especially going into the fact that we are discussing a lot with the, the land over there and whether or not we're, you know, we're gonna renew the lease and what we're gonna do in the future as far as the swimming pool and stuff. I think that in this time of planning in the future, I think that a liaison role is still important at this time. I don't know that we should get rid of it just yet.
Okay, um, any other thoughts or comments?
My perception, my, my perception was um the, the opposite of that. Not that uh it's not an important role, but um that it, they have their own functioning board. If anyone really wants to know what's going on at the school district, you can go or watch. Um, and so um other than that, uh, the liaison doesn't really do anything other than report what's going on there.
Okay.
That was my perception.
Okay.
Yeah, as is the case with all of our citizen committees, they're their own functioning committees, we're just there to be a liaison, we're there to answer questions if they have and we're here to report back to this body what's happening in that role. So I, I, I don't know, that, that's my two cents, I think that in this planning stage of the future with the pool and whatnot, I think that at least for this two-year, this biennium, I think we should keep the role.
Well, I think you're saying, Chris, I mean, it's, it's a separate government.
Right, right.
As a CFP, um, the fire too, so, you know.
And I, I would actually agree with uh councillor Hensley, I believe with uh the wind and everything that we're trying to go for, we, we need to still stay at least in the know of it. And uh even though it is its own private governing, I think we should still have an ear in it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, how many other, we've gone through this list really quickly, which is kind of nice compared to previous years.
Yeah, we're almost done.
I know, it's incredible, that's incredible, I could have made my flight. Um, the, I could have be, I could be doing this in Seattle, who knows? Um, the, how many other, how many other positions are there open on your list? Like, what's left?
Um, one, two, three, four, fi- five.
Okay, I, I guess, you know, I regarding this uh, you know, school liaison position, I feel kind of bad for councillor Banks that he's put into that situation because he works for the school.
Sure.
And so if.
Are you volunteering?
I am trying to do that, yes. If, if folks are, if we wanna continue that relationship, I will, I will have to look to see when, when does the school board meet? Mondays.
Every other Monday.
And.
Generally every other.
Is it the first or second Monday of each month?
It's right before our meeting.
It's, it's first and third.
So it's essentially the same night as planning commission meetings, which is what I've been used to having blocked off. Or no, is planning commission the second?
Second, fourth.
Whatever, it's just another Monday, if you'd like, I can, I can, I can pick that.
It's just another manic Monday, right?
There you go.
He's up the same thing. Well, actually, um.
We're the same age.
Oh, when does COVID mean?
Tuesdays.
Oh, so see, there you go.
Once a month.
Well, and it's interesting because I, I, I did feel the same way that you did uh councillor Patton about um councillor Banks and being somewhat of a, in a tough spot to report on and, and work in the same environment, but um and, I mean, Chris, I mean, what's.
He's probably done, he doesn't wanna go back to his school meeting.
What, what are your, I mean, do you, are you okay with councillor Patton takes that liaison? Okay.
I'm not anti-school district.
No, no.
We've got a hundred dollar bill over here.
Nothing has been worked out in advance.
Well, and here's what it says on my list too, it says uh Canby school district, it said currently it's councillor Banks and I'm hoping that councillor Patton would take that.
Oh, my gosh, we're, it's clairvoyant up here.
It was meant to be.
It was, it was, yes, it was meant to be. Um, so since we're in the thread of uh um other government districts, we do have a liaison. Usually the Canby fire district and that has been councillor Varwick. Um, and councillor Davis has said that he would sense he's in that environment and has been gracious to uh take that liaison role as well, is that your work perfect? Um, I, it's like you gotta be there anyways, right? Yeah, the bridging cultures uh group um is open currently. And then, yes, thank you councillor Maldonado for stepping up and taking that one. Um, that'll be great. The C four representative has been me, um that is one I'd like to continue at and base, so C four is the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. And so um I've been that representative for this group for eight years. And co-chair for the last uh four or five. And so I'd like to continue in that capacity and then we um, and then our, the alternative has been council president Hensley and I think that she is.
This place.
Uh, would continue on that, so thank you. Uh, the Canby adult center um is another one that had a couple of different people interested in it. Um, and but councillor Davis, if you'll be that liaison to that group, that'd be great. Um, a lot of that too, I mean, it's a daytime meeting usually is when they do theirs. So appreciate that, thank you. And a new one that came up, it was brought to us by the um heritage and landmark commission is and it's not really a liaison, I, they wanted it called out as a liaison role, but I think it's more of just um, this is, it's the Willamette Falls and Land Heritage Area Coalition, it's a mouthful, but it basically has to do with the Willamette Falls and the land around that area that's gonna be going through some major development over the next I wanna say ten to twenty years, but it could be twenty to thirty, but um the landmark uh heritage and landmark commission has people that are involved in those meetings as well, but they wanted somebody from the council to be a part of that. And um councillor Hensley has offered to, to be that liaison or attend those meetings and keep us abreast of how that develops as that starts to come online and they develop the um the esplanade that looks like they're gonna try to do out over the falls and then, and then eventually those buildings are gonna start to come down, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Councillor, councillor president Hensley, I find that area fascinating, would you have a problem if uh we kind of worked on that one together? I'd be interested in participating sometimes with that.
I, I want to be that liaison role, but if you wanna join me and go, absolutely.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Hey, if you wanna sign off for another meeting? And also, um, Mr. Mayor, um, I have facilitated French Prairie and the airport group in the past and um they, they seem to have, want to keep that connection and I'm willing to continue on in those as, if you, if you're interested in keeping them as roles.
Yeah, I, I think definitely um there's been a, there's, I was just reading in the paper recently that there's a, a land development piece that kind of didn't get approved there around the airport and the, and and that directly, I know Jamie's left, but that directly, the development out there definitely is something that can um future impact on, on Canby and, and our industrial park as well, so. Um, and I know that those kind of ebb and flow in terms of when they meet, so.
Yeah, they do this kind of, especially this time of year, it's been a little sporadic, but coming the new year, they're, they're gonna start meeting again, Dr. DiSartoni at the chamber launch and then he said they're gonna meet this month, so. I will be happy to continue in that capacity.
Uh, your honor, um, is that two different groups, the French Prairie and the Aurora Airport, or is it?
Two different groups, yes.
Okay, perfect, we just wanted to know for, making sure that.
Yeah, the French Prairie, um, that's the George Leo group and then there's uh Greg Leo, I'm sorry. And then um the PAM group is at the airport itself.
Thank you. Um, normally we also divide up the neighborhood um community uh organizations. Um, unfortunately, I, I didn't include that right now because none of them have been active the last um.
Well, there's biennium.
Several years.
Four or five years, so.
Yeah, we have four neighborhood associations and we've all had liaisonships, but.
So um, you know, if those do crop up and there is an interest and there's gonna be a meeting, um, I'd definitely let everyone know that that might be something that would come up or whatever. Um, but yeah, we'd love those um neighborhood associations to get going again. Councillor Banks?
I wouldn't mind us ha- us having a workshop at some point and how to rebuild that. Um, I've been the liaison to our neighborhood associations, which as far as I know, hasn't existed the entire time I've been on council. And I don't really have any idea how to go about putting anything like that together and I'd like to like discuss that with you guys who have done it.
Yeah, I, I would agree with councillor Banks that I think that the neighborhood associations are important, but they haven't been active. Um, I've been liaison to Riverside since I've been on council. But we haven't had a meeting since Bob Baxter moved to Florida.
And he was the chair at the time.
And he was the chair at the time, and so that's been four or five years. Um, I know that, I, at last I heard Jackie Jones was the southwest, I don't know if that's even happening. Doug Thomas was last chair I know of the southeast and I doubt that's still a thing. So I would like to um get on board with uh Doug Thomas. Um, but yeah, they, they're not even around, so I'm thinking that's a good idea, we should figure out how to revitalize these neighborhood associations. Um, and help them to reorganize if need be. And um, as I've been saying for years, I'd like to see a downtown one start now that we, especially since we have the Dalia and downtown residents. There's always been that gap from northeast to, or from north forth to south forth, it's kind of not had an association. So a center so, association would probably good, be a good thing to form. I've been saying that for two election cycles, but it hasn't happened yet. Maybe we can get it again.
No, I, I think that's a good idea, councillor Banks, cause as we, one of the things um that we did finish up towards the end of last year was the park master plan. And the, a hot topic right now is the development of uh or looking at the development of a park on the north side town at the Auburn Farms area. And um I do know that they have a chair person. Um, in fact, they had come to one of the parks meetings uh most recently and so um maybe that's the um.
What's the seed we can get growing, yeah?
Yeah, yes.
Um, sort of to piggyback on that, you know, it has been mentioned in the past as we've, in previous councils, when this topic has come up about the neighborhood associations, that a lot of times they don't really become active unless there's fire. Not literal fire, but if someone is agitated about something going on within their community. I think that if we, I think it would be beneficial for us to go down this path because one of the things that we, that has been talked about and will be continuing to talk about more is the development of the comprehensive plan and the transportation system development plan and then of the eventual urban growth boundary expansion. This would be a prime way for us to reboot those groups and have a direct connection into members of the community to really push to get their feedback.
Yep.
Uh, we have a hard time getting people to come in here willingly. Maybe if we decide we're gonna have a few meetings here and there and have snacks and drinks and ply them with food, then, you know, it might grease the wheels for getting some info, community involvement.
I would concur, cause I think that one of the things, when you and I met Jason was um how do we engage the, the greater community, um especially when we're looking at the comp plan and the TSP, so. Yeah, good ideas. Um, yes, Mr. Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I guess, add on to the comments about that, um that there has been discussion by the council in recent months about increasing our community outreach and community engagement, our communications for the city, and I think this the neighborhood associations is one of those really critical pieces of that, so. Um, we're gonna be doing the council goal-setting uh retreat here in the next few weeks and I would maybe suggest that this might even be a topic of discussion and kind of in the mix of um reinforcing that the communications uh efforts of the city is something we wanna focus on and so I think this plays into that as well and I just wanted to kind of note that for the record here too, so.
All right, perfect. Um, one of the things, thank you, uh councillor Banks, I appreciate that, that's good, it's, um, and thanks, uh, Mr. Archer. Um, and I failed to tell you guys, as your liaison positions, you gotta recruit people for your committees. Did I need that part out?
Library advisory board and school board are only staff.
Planning commission.
That was me.
That was you, I, I will not shame any of your subjects.
Let's see, so the transit advisory, this is for community members as well, if you're looking to get engaged. I know we just had a whole bunch of people um apply for an appointment, we had people run. Uh, I know that Mr. Lou Welling's here in the audience, but he's already committed.
He's on the planning commission now, thank you, Mr. Lou.
And I think the last time we appointed, we had seven or eight people apply, so. Um, there are three openings on the transit advisory committee, they meet every other month at five thirty.
The doors are locked until we get three people, just saying.
Let's see.
It's on you to get them now, hurry.
The heritage and landmark commission has one opening. The, I'm sorry, oh, and then the heritage and landmark commission also has a um high school uh student on that board and that is open as well. Um, the planning commission, um I know we just appointed three people, but I believe we have one more opening. Um, possibly another coming up. Um, and then our budgets, our urban renewal budget committee um has two openings. And then um our Canby utility board has one opening, which I think we're filling shortly. Right, Maya? We're working on, we're working on it. Now that we have a liaison. Yes, two on the city.
Urban rules do?
Yes, two for both.
Two for both.
No, there's only one, there's one extra for urban.
I understand that, but, so.
Oh, so it's two positions, period.
Two, period.
Gotcha, okay.
So two positions would serve on both.
With the budget committee, because there is nobody who really mans that or tends that group, uh, I know I have a problem with raising my hands, but I will continue to serve as an advocate to try and encourage people to get on that.
But we all should be on that one, honestly, the budget committee, we all want to be on that, yeah.
And um, I think it's, and maybe Mr. Archer and I can talk about how the important role that the assistant city administrator can play in recruiting um people for that position as well. Is that fair, stop? Okay. I don't wanna direct staff. Okay. I don't want to direct staff, uh.
We can't direct staff, but we can encourage our one employee.
The joke in that all is that our city attorney is also acts as our assistant city manager. So we can, well, we could direct our city attorney to tell the assistant city manager to do.
I said to myself, self?
Duly noted. Um, okay, um, Maya, did I leave any board agreement? Yes?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I had one other thing I wanted to add. I, I got an email just today and I just caught it shortly before the meeting and didn't have a chance to talk to you about it, but in the vein of this conversation, um, I was contacted by Metro on the MPAC, Metro Policy Advisory Committee, and requesting whether you were still going to be, uh, the chair. And I, I don't think that's a direct city liaison, but it, it's all kind of interconnected and I just wanted to mention that. I didn't know if that was something you wanted to.
I love, I love MPAC.
Yes.
So they were requesting, whether, uh, they were requesting my reply as to whether you intended to continue to do that, but not, I don't think that's a per se a city representative. You're kind of, it's part of the C4 and your connection there. So anyway, I just thought it was worth mentioning.
Which I have to say, again, I know I said it to you on the phone, but this guy's done a lot of stuff. He doesn't need any liaison roles outside of what he's already doing, so I'm glad you gave Parks up, because with C4 comes a lot of regional stuff and he's got a lot on his plate, so.
I appreciate that. I, but I do like the Parks piece, so.
I know, but it's in good hands with Counselor Davis.
They're a wily group, it's fun. We're getting stuff going, it's good.
As he says with a nervous laugh.
Well, we can watch it on TV.
Oh, I'll pop some popcorn and I'll watch, you know.
But yeah.
Jeff and Jerry and Spencer are, reel that group in. Uh, Maya, did I leave any, any off?
We're over here speculating, we haven't done it in the past, but the chamber is one that seems like a possibility that kind of touches on the business community.
A lot of us go to that luncheon every month anyway, though.
So, yeah, there's the luncheon that I know a lot, like, I know a lot of the, you know, the city's upper staff go to, and then I know that there's a number of the city councillors and, um, Counselor Davis goes as well. Um, and then I know that they do their monthly business meeting and whatnot, and when they're, they generally reach out when they want an update from either myself or from, uh, Mr. Archer, so I, I don't know. Um, and I know we've got, they've got a new director that's still kind of getting settled in and whatnot, and so, um, and she and I are trying to get on each other's calendar to touch base, so I don't know if it's necessarily needed a, a dedicated piece to that, but I appreciate that, though.
And Mr. Mayor, Counselor Davis is also immediate past president, so he's still technically on the board, so he's kind of a de facto liaison.
Good point. Um, one idea that came up in conversation with a couple of you here in the last couple of, the last week was, you know, what, you know, what do we do? Like, are liaison roles necessary or needed or wanted? Um, I think it's a worthwhile conversation, not one that I want to have tonight necessarily, but something that, um, in the future here as we kind of look at the activity level of our boards and committees and whatnot, and I, there is something that Scott and I will talk about next week about doing a, and I've talked about now for, I think, two years, is doing a, a mayors and chairs kind of a meeting to kind of see, does that make sense, you know, to do liaison roles? Is it better to just have them come to us in a meeting, you know, those kinds of things? So something to noodle, not, something we'll decide now, maybe that we get towards the end of the year, if we look to keeping or changing these things for next year, that could be a conversation piece.
Maybe next year's council goal setting.
Yeah, maybe. So I'll just put that out there as a food for thought piece. Um, so, uh, that's, that wraps that piece up, so thank you all for, um, the conversation. Um, any other comments, thoughts? Yes, sir.
So before COVID struck and shut us all down, we were starting to try to institute coffee with the counselor, coffee with the mayor every once in a while in the library. I didn't, I thought I would put that in your ear as something that could potentially come about again because we're open for business and, um, seems like a nice outreach.
Um, I would, I would be all for, I'll, I'll put myself out there and say, yeah, I'd be open to do something like that as well.
I can do coffee with the council.
So I'll, I'll put, uh, Danny Smith, our library director, on some sort of idea generating, you know, scheduling, and see if he can reach out to you folks.
Sure.
Absolutely.
As long as there's something other than coffee, because I can't stand it. So I'm in, too.
You'll have lemonade.
Sweet.
Lemonade with, with.
Lemonade with, I'm not sure how that.
Sweet tea?
Sweet tea with the P!
My only sweet, my only sad, we need to be careful here. Cookie season just ended.
Dear Lord, did it just end? Oh, my gosh.
Okay, goodness sakes.
Um, all right, we're going to move into mayor's business. I don't have a whole lot to say. I did just want to prepare, I did prepare just a couple of comments here. Um, I just wanted to say this, as we begin a new year.
Hey, where are you going?
Bye, guys, see you later. Uh, as we begin a new year filled with, uh, I believe, a mix of optimism and maybe with some apprehension with several new lead, leaders being chosen to sit up here on the dais, uh, I, I want to emphasize that as I have met with each of these councillors here over this last week or so, uh, I am filled with optimism. Um, what I heard the most from all of them was that they will work for the betterment of Canby through listening to their constituents, asking the hard, appropriate questions of each other and of staff. They will, they will work together through the challenging planning that is coming before us, you've already mentioned tonight. We've got the comprehensive plan, which is talking about the whole growth of Canby, our transportation system plan, where, where will all these trucks and cars go as we grow. Um, and then come to discussions and meetings with only a win-win mentality. I ask that as the council moves forward this year, which at times means taking a step back to regroup and to re-evaluate, that this is not a group of just no or just yes, um, that we are deliberate in our direction on the items that we as a city must focus on to be successful, that we act with purpose, that we work together toward a win-win for Canby's betterment. We have much to be excited about as a city, and I look forward to how we achieve our goals as a city. To Counselor Varwig, welcome to another four years, sir. Thank you. To Councillors Davis and Maldonado, congratulations to both of you and welcome to this council. Um, I know you both bring different skill sets and different experiences, but I know it'll add value, so I appreciate that you're here. Counselor Patton, welcome back. I do know that you will add value here, and I appreciate that you're here, so. Um, to Chris and Tracy, I did use first names.
You did.
So, to staff.
I've also known you for a dozen years, so.
That is true. Staff and all the citizens of Canby, um, I just want to say let us work together for the betterment of Canby as we move forward. So thank you, all of you for stepping up, and like I said earlier today, it is sometimes to a very tough and thankless job, um, but it is very rewarding, and what you put into it, you will get out of it. But you got to put it in to get it out. So I thank you all now, um, because I may not remember to say thank you later, but thank you for stepping up and doing this important role. So that's my, my piece. Um, Counselor Comments and Liaison Reports, usually, um, this is a section that we, the councillors will report back on anything liaison related or comments about anything, and usually we start there at the end with Mr. Patton, do you have anything right now you'd like to say?
Uh, I'm happy to be back on council and I will do what I can to help represent the citizens of this community. And, um, as you can imagine, considering we just went through the list of liaison, uh, assignments, I don't have any liaison reports for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Maldonado?
I just want to give a thank you to everyone for the opportunity, and I'm going to do my best to absolutely represent this position and Canby in the best light I can.
That's all we can ask. Thank you, sir. Counselor President Hensley?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a quick report. Traffic Safety Commission. I have good news to report, guys. The bridge project has been postponed.
In which bridge project are you referring to?
Knights Bridge will not be closed at the same time as the ODOT project. So it's going to be, it's bumped out a year. They had some permitting issues, some, some issues at the, at the county level, so they bumped that thing a year out, so the ODOT project will be done before they close the bridge. It will still be closed for six months, but it won't be this year, it'll be next year. So that's the good news. And, um, to my colleagues, uh, two years ago, when I sat in this role as a newly, um, appointed or elected, however you want to, uh, say it, council president, I offered and made appointments with each and every one of you for coffee to talk, and, um, it was a different time then, and I felt like we needed bridges built and whatnot, and I'm, I'm not going to make individual appointments, I'm going to just tell you all I'm available at any time. If you want to have coffee with me and have a talk about something, call me, text me. I, I, it is my longtime colleagues know, I'm, uh, I, I don't sleep much, so just text me. If I answer, I'm awake. If I don't, I will answer you when I'm awake. So just when you need to talk about something, reach out, I'm here, and, um, I'm happy to assist you in whatever you guys need, new ones and veterans alike. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Varwig?
Well, Happy New Year, Canby. Welcome back to, uh, council. I guess we've been off for a little bit, uh, over the holidays, and, uh, so I don't have any reports. Uh, I did want to kind of touch on some old business and ask if we could have a discussion at our next meeting regarding the dog park.
Already being teed up.
Already.
Wonderful. Counselor Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do not have any liaison reports to give. I want to congratulate, um, Councillors Davis and Varwig and Maldonado for your elections and, um, also for the mayor, although yours was less impressive. And, um, and, and also just to express my appreciation for, um, the outgoing councillors, Varwig, no, no, um, Marine and Spoon and the other two, Parker, yeah, all of whom, um, have, have become friends of mine over the last two years, and I'm going to miss them, and I just appreciate their service, and I'm excited to look and, looking forward to the next two years, working with all of you guys, and, uh, Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. Just a few things. Uh, one, everybody knows, we just had that ice storm in the streets. I just wanted to compliment the city staff, uh, public works, uh, the police department, uh, for the job that they did during the ice storm. Uh, Jerry and his crew were out themselves throwing sand underneath police cars, actually, getting them unstuck. It's too bad George isn't here still.
I know, they all laughed. Did they know you were calling out?
But anyway, uh, you know, excellent job, and they worked long hours during that ice storm, so pass on my thank you to, to those individuals. Also, again, I, I just wanted to thank the citizens, uh, for having trusted me to represent this great city. You know, I love this city, um, but I couldn't have done it without the support of my wife and my kids and my grandkids. Uh, and to all those that supported me, uh, along the way, uh, during, uh, my campaign for, uh, the city council. I'd also be remiss in not, you know, again, complimenting the outgoing councillors. Uh, each one of the councillors put in numerous amount of hours, and I appreciate the amount of time the returning councillors are doing, because I attend a lot of these meetings, and that doesn't even touch on half the time that you guys spend. So, uh, I did want, want to thank the outgoing councillors, uh, for the job that they did as well. And also looking back a little bit, too, on, uh, the city administration, we have an excellent staff here at the city. Um, and then looking back on some of the things that, uh, the past city administrator, Rick Robinson, did, uh, and that council at the time in regards to the day project, those are outstanding projects, and I'd like to see some of those continue to move forward, uh, as we move the city forward as well. Uh, I look forward to the goal-setting session and then allowing our city administrator to run the city, not as city councillors, I want the city administrator to run the city. Uh, make our job a lot easier and it will make their job a lot easier, uh, as well, too. It's already touched on that we've got a lot of things in front of us between the comprehensive plan, the Park Master Plan, the Walnut Street Extension, you know, I look forward to those challenges, uh, but it's, it's all very, very exciting. And to continue to maintain our excellent police department and fire and EMS services, uh, we are very fortunate to have a safe community, uh, because of our police department and our fire and EMS, uh, as well. And, uh, also look at, uh, our collaborative partners, too. We got a lot of really great collaborative partners that make the city, uh, successful as well, uh, with Canby Fire District, Canby Utility, Adult Center, Hope Village, um, great, uh, resource there, Canby School District, uh, the fairgrounds, um, what's happening at the fairgrounds. Uh, I mean, it's all, to me, it's all exciting, but more importantly, I'm going to be here to learn from the experienced city councillors, so please don't be afraid to tap me on the shoulder and tell me I'm all wet or whatever on some certain items, so I would appreciate that, because you guys have the knowledge, not me, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davis, appreciate that very much. Um, thank you. Um, Mr. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in, uh, light of the, uh, nature of tonight's meeting, I don't have my usual business reports, but I, I did want to make just a, uh, a few quick comments. Um, first, I want to say thank you to our three recent former, uh, city councillors, uh, Parker, Spoon, and Marine. Uh, appreciate all of the, the time and service that, that they provided to the city. Um, I want to say congratulations, Mayor, on your reelection. Congratulations, Counselor Varwig, on your reelection. And then, uh, congratulations and welcome to our three new, new, uh, council members, Counselor Davis, Counselor Maldonado, and Counselor Patton. Um, on behalf of the entire staff team, uh, I want to say that we are excited and look forward to working with you. Uh, we look forward to, uh, helping to carry out your vision, uh, and your goals and your hopes and dreams for, for the city of Canby. Uh, that really is, is, um, is job one for us, is, is helping you to carry out the, the direction that, that you all set for us, and, and we'll look forward to doing that. Um, and, and also just, uh, doing our day-to-day work that we, that we do. As you know, uh, we've got an excellent staff in our city that, um, are, are very dedicated, very public service oriented, and, um, thank you for the recognition, uh, Counselor Davis. Um, we, uh, we really do have a, a great dedicated team that just, uh, that really thrives on just carrying out the day-to-day business that sometimes gets forgotten about, and, and we look forward to just continuing that, but, uh, we, we really are excited to work with you, uh, as a council. So, um, again, congratulations and thank you to everybody, and Happy New Year.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, appreciate it. Um, in the agenda now, it's the second opportunity for citizen input, if there's any, not seeing any citizens rushing the table. Um, Maya, action review?
You have approved the consent agenda, um, including the reappointments and appointment, re-selected Counselor Hensley as council president, and selected liaison assignments.
Perfect.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, just to let everyone know here on the dais that this is atypical for us, please note that we do not have hour-long meetings, they generally run longer. So if you're new, if you're new to this group.
I can fill out a comment card real quick.
Nope, we're good. There are no obvious signs to yell at.
Oh, no!
Your yell courage for the recodes.
So, uh, before I take a motion to adjourn, again, thank you all, appreciate it, and looking forward to, um, the year ahead and Canby, Happy New Year, and, uh, please, um, get engaged, stay engaged, and, um, let us know how we can do better, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to abstain?
I'll vote no.
Canby, we are adjourned. Thank you and, uh, good night.